There's a lot of people out there that have heard the word puppy mill, but they don't really know what it means. To see and experience what a puppy mill really looks like, what a puppy mill feels like. Rows and stacks of cages. In each small cage, four or five dogs, one male and three or four females. Absolutely unable to comprehend human interaction. They're untouchable, you know, they cower to the back of the cage, extremely terrified. Did nothing but try my hardest not to cry. To see it in person and to experience what it feels like to look in the eyes of the dogs on the other side of those cages was life-changing for me. And the passion that was brewing inside of me right then, just hours after being in the puppy mills, I would not rest without doing something about it.
The Stone Kennel was part of a complex industry that is in theory closely regulated. Large-scale commercial kennels sometimes sell puppies direct to pet stores, but usually they sell to a broker who sells on to a pet store. Kennels that sell wholesale like this are subject to the Federal Animal Welfare Act and are licensed and inspected by the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
The USDA requirements are bare minimum, and in fact, the law even states the word "minimum requirements." And so, just basic food and water, supposed to be clean, and supposed to give them comfort from the bad weather, extremes of temperature. And that's basically it. I refer to those standards as survival standards. If you follow USDA standards, will a dog survive? Probably yes. But is it humane? Absolutely not.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jana Cole. I'm a clinical psychologist and I'm an expert on animal cruelty. I'm an expert on puppy mills and the link to pet stores. There has been...I actually want to thank one of the owners of Pets 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 for disclosing that they get their dogs from Hunt, because the Hunt Corporation is one of the most notorious puppy mill distributors, puppy mill brokers, distributors in the entire nation. And anyone can...anyone of you can Google that and find that. It's all over the internet. The Hunt Corporation has been investigated by HSUS and a number of animal welfare organizations. I'm not paid by any group or organization. I'm a full-time philanthropist and volunteer. My family founded Cole's Department Stores. I devote 100% of my proceeds from the sale of my book to help end animal cruelty. The link between puppy mills and pet stores is absolute, is 100%. It's mathematically impossible for a pet store to sell dogs that don't come from a humane breeder, because in order to keep up the supply, you have to keep breeding a dog every heat cycle. So it's impossible for them to not use puppy mills. So for anyone to stand up here and say, "We get our dogs from humane breeders," is absolutely not telling the truth. If they want to stay in business, and they can stay in business, they need to do the humane thing and model themselves after other stores that have converted to the adoption model. They sell supplies, they sell food. They work with animal welfare organizations, they pair up with humane animal welfare organizations, and they do adoptions. And it's a win-win for everyone. For someone to suggest that they will only get California dogs from now on, well, I can tell you right now, there are loads and loads, hundreds if not thousands of California puppy mills. So that will be no guarantee that this problem will not continue. And I thank you very much for banning the sale of animals in pet stores. From Pets Pets Pets, though.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Kelly Sawyer. I've spent the first five years of my life in Huntington Beach. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I do a lot of investigating in puppy mills with USDA reports and government inspector photos. I've bred probably 100 this week, which is why I have black rings under my eyes. I don't get much sleep. One thing that is important to know about California is puppy mills exist because of California. California is the retail outlet of Midwest puppy mills. We sell the most puppy mill dogs, and this was recorded by the Humane Society of the United States, tracked through interstate documents. And Orange County is the leading seller of the entire Midwest puppy mill industry. They are the manufacturers. We, in Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, and other cities, are the retail outlet. So to say that puppy mills don't exist here is...I just wanted to clear that up, because that is obviously not the case.
Puppy mills is a nationwide crisis. The Humane Society of the United States estimates that as many as 2 to 4 million puppy mill dogs are sold every year.
It really is a supply and demand issue. You know, too often, people think, "Well, this is just me, and I'll just get this one puppy," or they think they're rescuing a puppy from a pet store. And the reality is, this is a business, and you're not rescuing that puppy. You're simply opening up a cage for another puppy to be ordered up, because as soon as that cage is empty, there's another puppy coming. It's so important that people take strong consumer action, that they make a choice that they're not going to support puppy mills.
Diana Foster, owner of Thin Schmidt German Shepherds, fears that licensed dog breeding facilities like hers could be mistakenly thought of as puppy mill operations.
The puppy mill industry has really affected our business, as well as other professional breeders, as people really don't know who to weed out. And we really have to gain their trust. The first thing I think that's very important is ask about the parents. You want to see them. You want to be able to touch them and pet them and see what her temperament is like. I think it's very important for the dogs to have a really good environment. They do need exercise and social interaction with other dogs, as well as people. So that's very important, the environment that they're raised in.
For puppy mill dogs, the journey through life is often tragic. But there's a happy ending for the 11 dogs rescued the day Caesar accompanied LCA.
As far as all the dogs that we sent to the Brittany Foundation, two of them are still in foster homes, but the rest of all of them are in permanent homes. The six dogs that Caesar actually helped put into my truck have all been adopted, and they all have happy endings. One of them, Little Bit, stayed with me. I fostered her for about three weeks. She had some extensive surgery done on her stomach because she'd given birth six times in her young life of three years.
Kim, how are you today?
I'm good. Brought her to a protest, and Sharon Osborne was walking into the store to purchase a puppy. And I stopped her, and I said, "Wait, you know, we have some puppies here today." And she said, "Let me see them." And I showed her Little Bit, and she fell in love, and it worked out.
Hi, Caesar, it's Sharon Osborne. I want to thank you and Last Chance for Animals for rescuing Little Bit, because she is now a new member of the Osborne family, and we love her loads. Thank you. Look, she can't wait to get away.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, my name is Renee Karpadian. I'm the proud owner of Pet Rush, pet store in the city of Glendale. I was the first pet store that became humane, took the humane model in the city of Glendale. And since, not only have I not gone out of business, but it really put us on the map. I became a lot more successful. I became a lot more known in the city. And since last year, we were responsible for adopting out over 300 dogs out of my little hole-in-the-wall pet store in the city of Glendale. These are dogs that all came from county shelters that did not stand a chance otherwise. Every time I go to the shelters and I look at these dogs, this is one dog that I know I can save. And yes, one less dog that I...I could have bought a dog from a puppy mill. I have. I did sell. I made money. But now, I can tell you honestly from a businessperson, I'm making more money. I have a lot more clientele that trusts me, knows me by name. They come to the store for me, and they honor what I've done. And that's what I would like to see these other two stores to become. So I'd like to offer my help to these other two stores to show them how they can embrace this humane model and what they have to do to become very successful. I tripled my income. I'm a living proof that this is not only possible, but it's very easy to do. The community will support. They will not only survive, but they will make money. And the dogs are out there. The puppies are out there. The rescue is full of puppies. I go every week, and there's tons of them. And yes, it will cost you actually a lot less to get one of these dogs out of county shelter, spay neutered, macro-chipped, vaccinated, temperament tested. None of those are true with these puppies they get from puppy mills. Thank you for your time.
...inhumane conditions that these dogs are living in every day, day in and day out.
...of commercial breeders supplying puppies to pet stores and can be found in the Skadden 69-page report of the Inspector General published May 2010. These are the parents and living conditions of pet store puppies. These are pictures of many of the same USDA violations I have read to you from legal USDA reports of breeders supplying puppies to Newport Beach. Please take a good look at them. We've obtained more evidence from violations currently and continuously taking place in the pet stores of Newport Beach, which have officially been reported to the proper agencies. Our own Newport Beach shelter, OC Humane Society, has told me they refuse to have any relationship with these stores and refuse to be associated with them in any way. I Heart Puppies is currently undergoing questioning by our Newport Beach Police Department Animal Control on the whereabouts of six shelter dogs that they stated in this media article in an interview with Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce meeting. It is under the city's jurisdiction to receive information about homeless shelter animals under the profession of I Heart Puppies, and the citizens are requesting records of necessary immediate medical treatment and the transfer of these animals that are required to possess by law. These are homeless shelter dogs. It is a common practice for pet stores to sell puppies that are too old or unfit for sale to laboratories for research. The citizens do not accept this practice for homeless shelter dogs in Newport with no advocate, and we request documentation of proof that this did not happen.
Tonight, an exclusive hidden camera investigation. Are pet stores selling sick animals? CBS2 investigator reporter David Goldstein went undercover to expose what goes on behind closed doors.
We found some of them sick, over-medicated, and underweight. While you see the cute and cuddly dogs in the pet stores, we went behind closed doors, undercover with a hidden camera, sending in a producer who volunteered at pet stores for weeks, exposing what really goes on.
Do you sell sick animals? Why do you tell people that you're a vet?
We uncovered things that one pet store owner didn't want to talk about.
Well, please, talk to me.
Don't do it, don't do it.
Hey, hey, put the camera, hey, hey.
Don't do it, stop it.
Don't do it. Stop it.
So I really, really ask you to consider ordinance and banning the sale of dogs and cats.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment?
May I go? Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor McKen. I'm Kelly Sawyer. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. And I am here also in regards to the rally that was held at I Heart Puppies. I have sent you emails.
State your name and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Dave Simon. I'm an attorney. I work in Irvine. I live in Costa Mesa. I'd like to encourage the City Council to consider passing an ordinance similar to that which the Irvine City Council recently passed, which bans the sale of dogs and cats in retail stores. The Irvine...
Good evening, Council members. My name is Alicia Coverstein. I live in Newport Coast. I used to live in Irvine. Sometimes I'd hear other residents refer to it as being almost Newport Beach in a nod to our close neighbor's prestigious zip code. And Newport Beach truly is a wonderful place to live. I love living here. I moved here a few years ago, and I'm very proud to be a citizen of Newport. Now, as Irvine continues to garner accolades for its own high desirability among the top cities in the nation in which to live, I wonder if some Newport residents might be wishing Newport Beach should be just a little bit more like Irvine. I know I do. While Irvine has taken steps toward embracing an evolving culture of compassion, Newport continues to harbor businesses which support abject cruelty, as has been brought to your attention. And that's an ugly stain on our beautiful city. It's embarrassing to admit that our city still endorses practices which are widely held by its own residents as abhorrent, and I am talking about pet stores. The recent ban Irvine imposed on the retail sale of dogs and cats is commendable. Many other cities across the nation are moving toward this viable model of being progressive and compassionate. It would be wise for Newport Beach to follow suit. As you know, the Irvine Company has already taken the huge and admirable step of refusing to lease any of its properties to businesses which engage in the commercial sale of dogs and cats. And I'm sure they gave ample consideration to this decision and would only do so knowing that it would not hurt their sizable income and influence. In fact, it shines quite a flattering light on them. The Irvine Company has taken a noble stand on this issue. This ban wouldn't have to have an adverse effect on those who are in the business of catering to pet owners. A number of pet stores who previously sold puppies, for example, have successfully converted to a humane business model, offering only rescued animals. And there's a lot of money also to be made from the sale of all the luxury accessories which are lavished upon the pampered companion animals by discerning pet parents. It's a multi-billion-dollar industry which has seen tremendous growth in recent years as more and more people consider their animals to be legitimate members of the family and deserving of the finest lifestyle and comforts. Banning the retail sale of animals will help to put irresponsible breeders out of business, not reputable ones. It will not put Russo's, or I Heart Puppies, or other similar retailers out of business, but it will present them with an opportunity to redesign their business to have a wider public appeal. There's a growing wave of people choosing to adopt rather than shop, and there's increasing awareness among our citizens about the reality and horrors of puppy mills. The mass breeding of dogs in deplorable conditions is a practice which is doomed due to changing tides. People would rather support humane conscientious establishments rather than those that greedily profit from cruelty. It's happening in cities all around us. Please let Newport Beach join the ranks of the enlightened. Please take the responsible and judicious step of banning the retail sale of animals in our city. This is a worthy agenda item. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Any further public...
I am too, speaking on the behalf of the pet stores and breeders. There's animal control picking them up, and it's, you know, it costs money to euthanize all these animals because there's such an animal overpopulation. So our, like Irvine did a few weeks back, we'd just like to see that no more puppy mills. Let's get the rescues adopted and try and stop the pet population. Thank you.
There are a lot of real good people supporting this, and they don't even know it because they're buying these puppies, and they're buying these puppies, and they're buying these puppies. And they have no idea what they're supporting. They don't know where their money's going, but it's going to this. And this is a great day for these dogs, but, you know, we've got thousands of these in this country, so... It's a good day for these dogs. Please, help me stop puppy mills.
All right. I just urge you to look into this matter. It's not responsible to be supplying our citizens or our patrons with these sick, maladapted animals. It's cool. And I just urge you to look into this matter for us.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public comments?
Yep, this is for Poodle, $360, and saw in it for $1,200. All these are all the dogs that go in that window, so I just put them all in this one. There's actually another dog in there, but that dog is now in the back. So whatever that dog's back there for, they've all been exposed to that dog.
So one of the dogs with a possible URI was with these dogs. They've all been exposed.
Whatever. It could be URI, Giardia, Coccidia, I don't know. There's no label on it, and there's a requirement because of animal control control, they can get in trouble for not identifying the issue with the dog. Any store that sells dogs is a puppy mill because responsible breeders don't sell their dogs to stores because they have to deal with enough issues with state laws trying to pass currently that they're not going to jeopardize their hobby, which is occasional breeding, so...
Yeah.
Your whole purchase with a puppy from a store is a complete lie. You don't know any truth behind it in regards to where they come from in terms of in-home medical access to the store that they actually receive. So, buyer beware.